Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to tonight's regular meeting of the Portsmouth Planning Board for March 19th. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. I'll read them in separately and if we could vote on them separately. Approval of the minutes from the February 12, 2009 Planning Board Meeting.
So moved. Sorry. So moved.
All those in favor? Any opposed in the chair votes aye. Approval of the minutes from the February 19, 2009 Planning Board Meeting.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed in the chair votes aye. And finally, the approval of the minutes from the February 26, 2009 Planning Board Work Session.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed in the chair votes aye. We'll now move on to public hearings. Item A, the application of Catherine R. Whelan owner of property located at 660 Middle Street, wherein preliminary and final subdivision approval is requested to subdivide one lot into three lots with the following. Proposed Lot 1 having 16,377 square feet and 70 feet of street frontage on Middle Street. Proposed Lot 2 having 21,124 square feet and 108 feet off of a right-of-way. And Proposed Lot 3 having 21,268 square feet and 114 feet off of a right-of-way. And lying in a zone where a minimum lot area of 7,500 square feet and 100 feet of continuous street frontage is required. Said property is shown on Assessor Plan 147 as Lot 19 and lies within a general residence A District and Historic District A. The Board action on this matter has been deemed to be quasi-judicial in nature. If any person believes any member of the Board has a conflict of interest, that issue should be raised at this point or it will be deemed waived. Who's here tonight on behalf of the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. My name is Bernie Peelich, attorney from Portsmouth. I'm here on behalf of Dr. Goddett and Ms. Whelan, the applicants and owners of the property. This is our third time before you. We originally came back early on, came before the Board in January of 2008 with a conceptual plan. We later came back in July of 2008, at which time it was again postponed pending ZBA action. In August of 2008, we appeared before the zoning board and were granted a variance. The issue all along was the status of Chevrolet Avenue. After hearing our case at the zoning board, the zoning board agreed to grant the variance for the existing lot to have 70 feet of frontage on Middle Street and to allow the other two lots to have frontage on Chevrolet Avenue. In the notice of decision, the zoning board stated as follows. Creating three large lots out of one will not change the character of the neighborhood or affect the public interest. All of these lots meet the minimum lot size. The front property line for Lot 1 predates zoning and there is no way to increase the frontage on Lot 1. The spirit of the ordinance is to control overdevelopment off a dirt path, but the paved right-of-way on which lots 2 and 3 front has functioned and been maintained as a street and can support two houses with a common driveway. There is no benefit to the public in denying the variance that would outweigh the hardship on the property owner. Finally, property values will not be diminished and the project has the support of the immediate abutters. We're here this evening simply seeking preliminary subdivision approval. We realize that the plan that's been submitted by James Veran Associates needs to have meets and bounds added to it. He has not had the time to complete a full survey and add the meets and bounds to the proposed property line, so we'll be happy to come back before the Board once that is done. We have worked with Public Works and we're proposing, as you can see on the plan, a common driveway which would serve both of the lots. We intend to maintain a 20-foot vegetative buffer along the left-hand side of the lot to be created as specified by the zoning board. We also would like to maintain a heavily vegetated area along Chevrolet Avenue, and that's the purpose for the common driveway entering onto Proposed Lot 3. That common driveway would then take a right and service Lot 2 also. So that's the proposal. We have no problem. It may mean cutting some more vegetation, but we could line this common driveway up with the driveway across the street which serves the Malt House Exchange parking lot. It will mean cutting a few more of the large pine trees. We show it now as not being exactly lined up with that driveway, but we can do either, whichever is the desire of the Board. We can line it up exactly, which will mean cutting some of the vegetative buffer between the lot and Chevrolet Avenue, or we can leave it as proposed and not have to cut some of those large evergreen trees. Thank you.
Questions for the applicant, Mr. Hopely?
Bernie, concerning this, Lot 3 wants us to...
Which probably best explains it, an aerial photo. There is a large, and there's an existing gate there now, but let me just pass this aerial photo around, which shows the large stand of evergreen trees, which my clients really would not, would rather not have to cut them. It would certainly affect the lots. They intend to build a smaller house on one of the lots and reside on one of the lots. This picture...
Want to bring the mic with you, Bernie?
I'll start it here and you can circulate it, but you can see the red...
Bernie, you gotta use the mic.
The red magic marker denotes the property line and you can see the stand of evergreen trees.
Well, I guess, continuing, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
On the final plat, will this common driveway be some sort of a shared easement across Lot 3 for the benefit of Lot 2?
Yeah. There would be an easement over Lot 3 to benefit Lot 2 for the common driveway.
And then it would have, by that time, it would have to be defined as to where it goes?
Yes. It would be shown on the final subdivision plan and utility servicing Lot Number 2 would also probably run under that driveway, water in, at least water.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Coker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A question for the department. Somewhere in the back of my mind, I remember a question about the status of Chevrolet Avenue. And perhaps you can refresh me as to what the question of the status was, not relative to this application, but whether it is, as I recall, whether it was considered a private road, or whether it was a public street, or there seemed, I could be wrong, so please correct me if I am.
No reason to correct you this time.
Well, I thank you, David.
The paragraph before the recommendation in the memo addresses it, but essentially we're treating this section of Chevrolet Avenue and more than likely the entire section will be deemed a city street. So for purposes of this application, it is now a city street where Chevrolet Avenue is out front of the lot.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, may I follow up? You said "will be" treated as a public street.
Is treated as a public street.
Okay. Do we have any sort of decision, formal decision where that was made, or...
Yes. We met with the legal department and have gone over at great length some of the issues that pertain to this. There is no great issue out in front of this lot. There may be some issues on adjacent properties, but not for this lot. And the legal department will be taking this issue up further, but for purposes of this application and this Board and this subdivision, it is a city street.
Okay. If you could help me understand this a little bit better, because I'm confused. It will be a public street, but it will not be a public street for adjacent lots, is that...
I didn't say that.
Okay, that's why I'm trying to get it clear, so...
It'll be a public street, but there are some formalities that'll need to be followed in terms of some other additional properties off of the street, but not these two.
Okay, so in your opinion, the second stipulation would cover any of that, which is the legal and planning should review the boundary line as it relates to Chevrolet Avenue?
As they say in the attorney's world, this comes from an abundance of caution. Most lots, when they're subdivided, actually do go to the center line of a street, but because the history of the street is such, I just wanted to make sure that the property line that is shown here would be correctly depicted as going to the center line of the street, or whether it should be to the right-of-way, which would be the more normal one for a city street. So that will be the opportunity to look at that issue.
Okay. Thank you.
And I think Attorney Peelich is helpful in indicating that he's only seeking preliminary approval. Since we don't have the meets and bounds, that will allow for that additional consideration.
Oh, one more, and then I promise it's it.
No, that's all right.
Attorney Peelich, you made the statement that you have the support of the immediate abutters. Do you have that in writing?
No, I think we may have had it at the zoning board, but I don't have anything to produce this evening.
Nor is that necessarily a standard for review.
I understand.
I was just, I was reading from the decision of the zoning board. That was what they had stated in their decision.
Okay, thank you.
I would also point out that the status of Chevrolet Avenue is really, although what David has said I concur with, we were granted a variance by the zoning board to have our frontage on a private right-of-way if it were ever determined that that was not a city street.
That's correct.
Mr. Coviallo?
I guess this is a question for the department as well. I was surprised to see no mention of the concern of having the driveway exit right into the intersection or near the intersection. Is it just because this is such a small amount of travel on this street, or...
Well, the norm would be to form an intersection, but additionally, the traffic from a one or two families, from two lots is relatively insignificant in terms of a driveway.
I just thought about people backing up into the intersection, having almost look at three directions, you know?
Well, the curb cut will actually be done by DPW, so they'll have an opportunity to review it. I don't see it as a concern.
Okay. Mr. Coker?
Just a question, Bernie. On Lot 3, it says "proposed SMH." What is an SMH?
Sewer manhole.
On Lot, I'm sorry, Lot 3?
Sewer manhole?
Yes.
SMH is a sewer manhole, yes.
Okay, that's all I needed. Thank you.
Oh, I have...
Another view of that. That's where we get the driveway. Good. That just showed the evergreen.
Trees are pretty rough shape, though.
Mr. Blanketson?
Attorney Peelich? I just had a question on Lot, Proposed Lot 2?
Yes.
Thirty-foot right-of-way agreement. What exactly is that?
That's a private right-of-way agreement that dates back to the Frank Jones Brewery in the early, late 1800s, early 1900s. At that time, the two abutting property owners agreed to grant one another, and I can provide that right-of-way agreement. This lot and the lot to the west agreed to grant one another rights-of-way over that 30-foot strip of land that lies between their fences and what the city now calls Chevrolet Avenue. So even though we own in free simple to the edge of pavement, the abutter to the right, if you're looking at it from Chevrolet Avenue, has a right-of-way over that strip of land as we have a right-of-way over her strip of land, because before the Malt House Exchange was constructed, I'm dating myself, the road took a right and went into Old Public Works and never connected into Plaza 800.
Right, okay.
In the early 80s, when the Malt House Exchange was built, I was representing them, believe it or not, and John McMaster was the Traffic and Safety Chairman, and the idea came up at his suggestion to connect what we call Chevrolet Avenue through to Plaza 800 in the vicinity of the State Liquor Store. And an agreement was worked out whereby that happened. We built it. The city has maintained it ever since. When the city sold the old Public Works Department to King Weinstein, they reserved a right-of-way for a future public roadway over that portion of Chevrolet Avenue from Plaza 800, basically at least to the Malt House Exchange. So the city and the general public have rights-of-way over that paved strip now.
Also, Attorney Peelich, since he's been around so long, may also recall that this was the roadbed for the Frank Jones Brewery Railroad, and this is where the turntable was located, was just off the site.
I wasn't around back then, David, but I do recall that.
Oh, I was sure you were.
I'm sure you could have been.
The land use records, though, are a little unclear, and so there is a fair amount of effort going into this.
Counsel Dwyer?
Well, I mean, this may be for the future, but, you know, thinking about how things are going to change in that area with some of the proposals that are in that area for, approved proposals for the condominiums, and I haven't yet been to the thing that we're all going to next week, so I don't know if the part of the plan that was to have parking, major parking for the Islington Street area, Islington Street corridor, in the larger lot. And so I just want to mark that that's potentially going to become a much busier street, and the nature of what that street is going to be, is going to, one way or another, is going to change incredibly. It's either going to be some busier or a lot busier. And so thinking about where the curb cut is and how things line up and how people are going to get out seems like a very important issue for the, you know, the next go...
There are massive proposed changes with regard to sewer lines, stormwater separation in that area.
Yes.
However, those have nothing to do with this.
Oh, no, they don't. No, no. Thank goodness.
I've got a question, Bernie. That proposed sewer manhole?
Yes.
I'm assuming, is the intention for that to stay private?
Uh...
Should there be an easement considered in that area?
Right now, the abutting property owner to the right, if you're looking at it from Chevrolet Avenue, has a private sewer line which runs across her property and our property along that right-of-way and ties in to a sewer line down closer to Cass Street. We are proposing to put in two sewer manholes. If the city wishes, it can become a public sewer, but I think it would still probably remain private.
Okay. That answers my question then. Any other questions for the applicant? Ms. Gafford?
I just have questions about, and this might be more directed to David and to you. If the city were to put a sidewalk along Chevrolet Avenue or something like that, along this side, assuming that the foliage wasn't in the way, I'm just not sure where the right-of-way for Chevrolet Avenue, I see the dashed line, but is that, is that something the city could do? I'm just a little confused about where the boundaries of the street are.
Well, that's one reason that we were hoping to have the final plat before you, and that's really part of that. So it may be an issue that'll have to be addressed a little better when they come in for the final. The new-ish, not issue, but the resolution we have for you is that in this area, it's deemed to be a city street.
Okay.
And because of that, there's only one driveway, not two driveways. DPW will do the curb cut. We respect the intent to keep the trees there. If the, normally you would not have a subdivision of one or two lots putting in a sidewalk, but I am sure, given the nature in the Islington Street and all the things that are going there, you probably would see it as a future capital plan, or maybe something the Board will look at.
So in terms of sending this applicant away, would we ask for a little bit more definition of that and the driveway on the final?
I think the final will require it.
Yeah.
Was our hope that we would have that, but I understand that they weren't able to produce it. I would suggest that if you have concerns, to add them as your conditions so that we can take a look at it and make sure we've addressed everything that you're identifying.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Coker?
Just a quick question, Bernie, so I can understand a little better. What was the logic of having a shared driveway as opposed to two separate driveways on two separate lots?
Simply to preserve those large evergreen trees.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? No? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll now open up the public hearing. Anybody in the public wish to speak to, for, against the application? Second time, third and final time, to, for, against? Seeing no one rise, I'll close the public hearing. This is for preliminary. Mr. Coviallo?
I don't want to beat a dead horse. I guess, I just feel unfulfilled on my answer, the answer to my question before. It seems to me that the, and I understand that we'll know more in the final plat, I just want to know the appropriateness of the department thinks of having a stipulation of showing the curb cut for the driveway on the final, and that if it's, it's my opinion, which may be wrong, that the curb cut should occur more on Lot 2 and not on Lot 3, away from the intersection. And that'd be my preference. I was just curious on the department's response.
The way I'd recommend it is if you want to add a stipulation, that DPW review this for the issuance of a curb cut. That way you'll know that if they approve it in that location, it meets their standards, and if they want to recommend something else, we can meet and discuss with the applicant.
Okay.
That'd be very appropriate.
Sure.
Ms. Gafford?
I also want to support that because I want to see where the driveway's going to be.
Was that a motion? I don't believe it was.
No, I didn't think it was.
I'll make it a motion if you want, if there's no more discussion.
I think for purposes of discussion, I think we should.
Sure. Then I'd like to make a motion to approve the application, the preliminary subdivision plat with the, I guess the, all five stipulations still apply to the, from the department memo, and a sixth stipulation that the applicant work with DPW to show an appropriate curb cut on the plan for the driveway.
Okay. Second, then Ms. Patnaugh, discussion?
I'd just like to see an elaboration of the driveway as an added stipulation, if this is okay, not just the curb cut, not just the little bit of the driveway, but how it cuts across the lots, and also better delineation of the street and sidewalk possibilities there.
Second, that's fine to the maker.
Further discussion on the motion? Hearing none on called vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I was just concerned from a profession that I happen to be involved with, lots that have shared driveways have, do not share the same value that lots that don't have shared driveways have. I understand the desire of the owners to preserve the trees, that the trees could be, based on that, the recent ice storm that we had, you know, kind of a tenuous proposition as time goes on. So I'm just concerned that in terms of city tax rolls, assessment rolls, or whatever, I don't know whether this is a, something that we should be considering, but I think creating two lots with a shared driveway is creating two lots that are not going to have as much value to the city and probably to owners in the future than two lots that share a driveway.
I think there's also the, there's an inherent value by leaving the vegetation that's there versus putting two separate driveways in, so, David, do you have a comment on that?
I was just going to add that in the master plan and in our subdivision regulations, we encourage shared driveways, and we try to do that wherever we can. And it's not so much for the value of the property as it is for the importance of the infrastructure that is being used, i.e. the street access. So we will honor it when it is an individual, but we would actually combine them wherever we can, and we have done that in the past.
I just threw that out.
No, it's a good point. Any discussion before we call the final vote? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed in the chair votes aye. Thank you. We will now move on to Item B under public hearings. The application of Charles E. Godswell and Ronald CJ Cogswell, co-trustees of the Eva LJ Cogswell Family Trust, owners of property located at 370 Meadow Road, and Charles E. Cogswell and Ronald CJ Cogswell, trustees of the Charles E. Cogswell Revocable Inter vivos Trust, owners for property located at 73 Rockingham Avenue, wherein preliminary and final subdivision approval for a lot line revision is requested between two lots having the following. Lot 19 is shown on Assessor Plan 236, increasing an area from 5,000 square feet to 6,852 square feet, and continuous street frontage increasing from 50 feet to 78.36 feet. And Lot 19A is shown on Assessor Plan 236, decreasing an area from 23,838 to 21,986 square feet, and continuous street frontage remaining at 180 feet. And lying in a district where a minimum lot area of 15,000 square feet and 100 feet of continuous street frontage is required. Said properties are located in a single Residence B District and are shown on Assessor Plan 236 as lots 19 and 19A. The Board action on this matter has been deemed to be quasi-judicial in nature. If any person believes any member of the Board has a conflict of interest, that issue should be raised at this point or it will be deemed waived. Who's here tonight on behalf of the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. I'm Attorney Charles Griffin, and I'm here tonight representing Charles and Ronald Cogswell, who are co-trustees of the Eva Cogswell Family Trust that owns the property at 370 Meadow Road, and also co-trustees of the Charles Cogswell Revocable Trust that owns the property at 73 Rockingham Avenue. This is a request for a lot line adjustment to enable a situation which physically exists on the ground, namely, a major portion of the parking area for the duplex at 73 Rockingham Avenue presently lies on the property at 370 Meadow Road, legally to become part of the property at 73 Rockingham Avenue. The Cogswells have owned both of these lots since 1980, and in 1984, they obtained variances to create two separate lots, after which they built their home, a single-family residence, on the 370 Meadow Road lot. The 73 Rockingham Avenue lot is a prior non-conforming 5,000-square-foot lot on which there is presently a duplex and on which there was a duplex when the Cogswells purchased the property in 1980. Under the new plan, its area will be increased by just over 37 percent, or at 6,852 square feet. Its frontage will increase by 57 percent, from 50 feet to 78.26 feet, and the new lot will now meet the existing rear setback requirement of 30 feet. And while it will still remain non-conforming, it will become more conforming than presently exists. And while the area of 370 Meadow Road will be reduced by about 8 percent, it will still remain conforming and meet all the requirements for a lot in the single Residence B District. The somewhat irregular shape of the rear and side lot lines of the proposed new lot for 73 Rockingham Avenue arises from the fact that in order to enable the 370 Meadow Road lot to comply with the 30-foot rear setback requirement, it's necessary to have the lot lines where they are. So we view this as a relatively minor change to enable a situation that physically exists on the ground to become a legal reality as well. To deny the request and to keep the existing lot lines as they are would require the vehicles to back out onto Rockingham Avenue, and that, we don't think is a desirable situation. And so we think it's in the public interest to allow the revision as well, and we'd ask that you give a preliminary and final approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant? Mr. Coker?
Actually, I have a question for the department. David, could you elaborate a little bit? I just frankly don't understand. The department notes, however, lacking the reduction in non-conformities, there would be issues, there would be issues to consider regarding the shape of the common boundary.
Yeah, what we're doing, what the department is doing is preserving the right to indicate to you that this is an unusual lot configuration and would not lightly be recommended for approval were it not for the benefits to be gained by relocating the lot line.
Okay. That's much clearer.
In other, in other situations, we've recommended that you not approve a lot line that is, shall we say, gerrymandered.
Yeah.
And so we're pointing out that without the benefit of the improvements, this could be considered that.
Okay, thank you.
But it does have the improvements.
Thank you. I'll now open up the public hearing. If there's anybody that would like to speak to, for, against the application, second time, third and final time, to, for, against? Seeing no one rise, I'll now close the public hearing. Seeing no one rise, I'll now close the public hearing. Mr. Coviallo.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion for approval of preliminary and final subdivision with the three stipulations outlined in the department memo.
Seconded?
Second.
Discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. Thank you. We'll now go to item C under public hearings. The application of Public Service of New Hampshire owner for property located in the Public Service of New Hampshire right-of-way at Griffin Road, wherein a conditional use permit is requested is allowed in Article 6, Section 10-608B of the zoning ordinance for the removal of five existing utility poles and the construction of two new utility poles, all within an inland wetlands protection district. Said property is shown on Assessor Plan 259 as Lot 1, Assessor Plan 263 as Lot 1-1, and Assessor Plan 165 as Lot 14, and lie within the industrial and municipal districts. The board action of this matter has been deemed to be quasi-judicial in nature. If any person believes any member of the board has a conflict of interest, that issue should be raised at this point, or it will be deemed waived. Who's here tonight on behalf of the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's Patrick Kermans. I'm with Appledore Engineering. I'm here tonight for you for a conditional use permit. And we met with the planning, with the Conservation Commission on March 11th, which we received unanimously recommendation for approval. What the overall project is, it's located on an existing right-of-way that's located between Route 33 and Griffin Road. Proposed project, the overall project calls for eight poles to be removed and eight poles to be constructed. There's two poles. Son? Two existing, there's three existing poles right here. Currently, PSNH has two switches that reside on these poles. One of the pitch, switches actually does not work at this time. The proposal is to relocate the switches along Griffin Road where they can actually access them. The proposed project, in, in the conditional use, within the inland-wetland district, we're removing five utility poles, and we're only constructing one new utility pole. That's a net improvement of four poles. And within the 100-foot buffer, we're removing one utility pole and constructing one additional utility pole, which is a net improvement, it's a net zero. Outside, this is not within the buffer zone, but just for your reference, because it is on your plan, we are proposing 776 square feet of wetland impact. We have submitted a wetland application to NHDES. That's about it. It's a pretty straightforward project. It's removing five poles and constructing one, so we have a net of four inside the inland-wetland district, and removing one pole and constructing one pole inside the foot buffer for a net of zero.
Patrick, you might want to just go over the Conservation Commission.
Go over.
Indicating that they reviewed it and have favorably recommended it.
Oh, okay. They, we met with the CONCOM on March 11th, as I previously stated, and they did vote unanimously to recommend approval to you folks.
Mr. Coviallo.
Why is it a temporary wetland?
Oh, I'm sorry. In order to access the poles, these three yellow areas here, they are temporary impacts. In order to access these poles to remove and construct, the service vehicles have to get out to the poles. In order to do so, they will have to access within the existing right-of-way, PSNH will have to access these poles. So what will happen is, there's a dash line that runs through this right-of-way right here. It's a 15-foot wide line. It's a temporary access route for their service vehicles. What happens is, inside the wetland, where those service vehicles have to go, the vegetation's going to be cut by hand to keep the root system, and they'll place matting, 15-foot wide mats on top of it, so that the vegetation will be there. And once construction's done, they'll come back, remove the mats, and then the vegetation can reestablish itself.
So it's not a temporary wetland, it is a wetland, you're just, you're just going to temporarily stop it?
Yeah. It is, it's a tempor, it's considered a temporary impact because of we're placing the mat on top of it.
But the wetland's not temporary.
No.
The impact's temporary.
Yes.
Oh, okay. All right, I had to keep reading the next line.
Are you all set, Mr. Coviallo?
Yeah, just struggling with the English language.
No, that's okay. Any questions for the applicant? No? Thank you. I'll now open up the public hearing. If there's anybody in the public wishing to speak two, four, against the application? Second time, third and final time, seeing no one rise, I'll close the public hearing.
I'd just like to indicate to the board that you do have a report from our city engineer, who's actually deputy public works. We were able to pin him down today to get him to dictate this and sign it. Otherwise, we'd have gotten to it earlier. But as one of the conditions is, he demonstrated his approval, which he has so done with this memo that you have before you.
Thank you, David. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve the application as presented. I don't see any stipulations here.
Second. Second. Discussion on the motion? Call the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. Thank you. I will read in item D, and I think David will give us an update on that. The application of Ocean Properties Limited, applicant, for property located at 1 International Drive, wherein site review approval is requested to construct a 72,000-square-foot, four-story office building with related paving, utilities, lighting, landscaping, drainage, and associated site improvements. Said property is shown on Assessor Plan 303 as Lot 2, and lies within the airport, business, commercial district. The board action of this matter has been deemed to be quasi-judicial in nature. If any person believes any member of the board has a conflict of interest, that issue should be raised at this point, or it will be deemed waived. David, can you shed some light?
Yes. At the technical advisory committee meeting, an issue was raised as to where the municipal boundary is located between Newington and Portsmouth. You may recall that several years ago, there was a perambulation, which is required by state statute, and Newington and Portsmouth did their best to determine where the common boundary is for these two municipalities. And as a result of that, Newington feels that there might be a discrepancy in the site plan. So the TAC committee acted by saying if there was an issue that the PDA and the town of Newington work it out, that process is still continuing. And so Ocean Property has requested that this matter be postponed to your April meeting, and we would so recommend it this time.
Second. Seconded? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. Thank you, David. We'll now move on to city council referrals and requests. There are three items under this. Item A, the request from John Ducci, Northern Tier Real Estate Acquisition and Development LLC, for property located at 172 Hanover Street, to remove the current glass atrium enclosure and replace with a more permanent structure.
The department's memo, I think, is fairly clear as to the matter. I was expecting that Mr. Ducci would submit a letter where he had affirmed his intent that he might want to seek modifications to the existing structure and to allow as a basis for that to also do a new license, which is the fundamental behind recommendations five and six. The department, however, has not received that letter, and so the department is a little not concerned so much, but a little not aware of what's going to happen next. My recommendation at this time would be that if you concur with the department's recommendation, which is that the Vaughan Mall right-of-way is significant to the city's future, and that we should not allow a permanent encroachment within that, that you favorably make the following recommendations. I would suggest all six of them, and then ask the department to report back in April with Mr. Ducci if they want to proceed with five and six. What that would do is, rather than submit two reports to the council, you'd be affirming no permanent encroachments within the Vaughan Mall right-of-way, but also allowing for the opportunity, if Mr. Ducci would so like, to make modifications to the existing structure, which would then allow for a new license agreement to be prepared. And hopefully you would have more information at your April meeting if that were the case.
Almost sounded like it was made in the form of a motion.
Yeah. I move that we make a recommendation to the city council, just like what David said, and I, I want to affirm that at this point, permanent encroachment in the Vaughan Mall is not a good idea.
Second. Second, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye.
I assume based on that that we can communicate with Mr. Ducci and try to see if we can do five and six at the April meeting. Thank you.
Item B, under city council referrals and requests, requests from Laurel Crawford Empower Yoga Center LLC for property located at 63 Market Street to install a projecting sign.
I don't believe the applicant is here, although I do recognize a grand lady in the audience. What this is, is a new sign that is projecting over a sidewalk that would go in place of a pre-existing sign, but because the sign is slightly different, it is subject to a sign permit, and therefore opens up the issue of a license. And the department continues to recommend that licenses should be granted so that the city retains the right in the future outside of the land use controls to remove a sign if it were deemed appropriate. Therefore, the department would recommend that you make the recommendations that we are presenting to you as the basis of your report back to the city council. And in this case, there are no real outstanding issues in this regard. We're basically addressing the new, the appropriate way of addressing an encroachment over a right-of, over a right-of-way.
Mr. Coviallo? We don't have to have a public hearing, right?
No. It's a report back. It's actually, in this case, it's not legisla, it's legislative in nature, not judicial.
So, let's pretend Dave just finished speaking, so moved.
So, we need a vote on it, David?
Yes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. The last item under city council referrals and requests is item C, the request from Jask Realty Trust for property between Bartlett Street and the US Route 1 bypass to rezone the land.
I note that Attorney Peelich is here. I would have afforded you an opportunity to let him speak if you wish, but the gist of it is, this is a referral from the council, seeking report back on a rezoning of certain land off of the Route 1 bypass. Attorney Peelich, who is somewhat familiar with our procedures, has actually submitted the required informational matrix report as part of this request, so you actually do have some preliminary information. Under the board's normal procedures at this time, you would likely direct the department to prepare its rezoning report and present its findings back to you, at which time you could then make your mind up in terms of what you would like to do next. The other issues that are out there involve that you're working on the zoning ordinance, you're working on the zoning map, and all those other issues. So maybe you want to consider what your schedule is, or you may, it's really pretty much a board decision in this matter, and that's one reason why I'd suggest you allow Attorney Peelich to perhaps have a moment to address the board.
Thank you, David. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I have nothing new to report. I have not heard back from U-Haul, as you know. Jask owns all but three of the parcels, four of the parcels located in the zone which we are seeking to change from an industrial zone to a general business zone. Three of the four property owners have voiced their support and do support the, the change in zoning. U-Haul International has not responded, which is not unexpected. I agree with Mr. Holden that probably the next step before it is scheduled for a public hearing is to have the planning department report back, and I'll be happy to work with David in, in doing anything we can to, to flesh out the informational report if needed, and to work with David on potential for a through-connect the roadway also as part of the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this point, you might want to direct the board, or direct the department. I'm aware of how much work you have, but the normal procedure would be to direct the department to prepare a rezoning report in response to this request that you can review, and you can pick the appropriate time that you would like to have that back.
Counsel Dwyer.
Well, it seems that we're, we tended to not try to do that over the last 12 months, and that we're very close to looking at the zoning map as a whole to see the kinds of changes that need to be done. That's one of the remaining things, as I understand it, that we will, we will do as, as we take up some of our final zoning changes. So I, I would think we would want to look at this, which is in light of the other kinds of changes that we would be proposing for not just this property, but other properties as well, because this may not be the most appropriate choice for all of that area. And I think we need to look at that as a whole rather than piecemeal. I thought we kind of made that decision after a few forays into piecemeal work.
The only comment I would make back, if I could, is the master plan does address that this area needs to be looked at for rezoning.
Sure. I don't disagree with that. I, I don't disagree with that at all. I just think we need to look at this in light of some of the new zoning options we've, we're creating and some of the other ways we're thinking about zoning, so that we, we kind of move to a more enlightened way of, of doing zoning. And I think that's, that's what, that's the path the department has been leading us on, so I don't want to veer off that path. That's what I think Cindy Hayden would say if she were here.
Yeah. No, no issue with that. I think if you wanted the, the department to prepare a rezoning report, that would probably be a function in that report. So if you want to sort of have it both ways, it might be to direct the department to work in regards to the present zoning ordinance and the future zoning ordinance, to come back with a recommendation on it in terms of the, of the proposed zoning ordinance that you'll be reviewing.
Sounds perfect.
Mr. Coviallo.
So, did I hear that you're suggesting that we, I heard the part where you said have the staff produce a zoning matrix? Is it going to be then, at that point, we're going to get a recommendation from staff if we should treat it separately or treat it as part of the whole?
I think that would be one of the things that would be reviewed. I would think that it would be based on the new primarily. In other words, there's a lot of work going on that probably will be of some assistance in this review. What I'm sort of getting at is, I don't think it can be turned around in terms of April, but it might be able to be turned around in terms of May, and it may have some suggestions as to how you should handle it. Attorney Peelich has done a very good job of keeping this item sort of in a forward movement.
Would you like a motion?
I would.
Question before the motion, please?
So procedurally, really, the next step is to do the zoning. I mean, that's, that's...
Well, your first one is to sort of say, do we want...
Zoning matrix, I'm sorry, I left the word off.
The first word, the first one is, do you want to do it? And I think I'm trying to say, as Counsel Dwyer was saying, there's a lot of good stuff out there that we want to look at this in terms of it. Your procedure says to do it, but you're also correct, you've been waiting to get the zoning ordinance and zoning map done. Well, this sort of crosses over in that, so do you want to put the hybrid together and have us look at it? And my suggestion would be is that you give us a little bit of time to pull this together, perhaps May, and perhaps we can accommodate everything.
I think that'll be a good time to look at it as well, so.
Is this, is this their report?
Yes.
Okay, so item two has been fulfilled, and they... There's no more to come from, from stipulation two in the memo?
Oh, yeah, what was stipulation two?
I believe so.
Oh, we didn't know it was coming at that point.
So, did you make a motion?
So, I make a motion to direct the department and the applicant to follow the board's administrative procedure for a rezoning request and to have materials available for a subsequent meeting in May or June, I guess, and the department should prepare a zoning report. In addition to that, I guess. That'd be it?
Okay. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion?
I'd just like to maybe slightly amend that to kind of pick up the discussion we just had, which is to say that that is, that would be a part of our overall zoning map review, as a part of our overall zoning map review, not as a separate piece.
I think the department would point out from the get-go that there is not a lot of sense in doing this in terms of the present ordinance.
You're right.
Other than to perhaps point out what the issues would be on that and to concentrate more on the proposed.
Is that amenable?
That's fine.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. We'll move on to business. There's two items. Requesting Commercial Group for property located at 72 Marona Road for a one-year extension of site review approval, which was granted on May 15th, 2008.
This would expire on May 15th. It's the first request. We'd recommend that you allow this permit to be extended to May 15th of 2010.
May I vote on that, David?
Yes.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. Item B, report back on the condition compliance for property located at 195 Hanover Street.
The board may recall that this is the Parade Mall property, where it was subdivided into three lots. One of the conditions of the subdivision and subsequent site review was to track the original easements that were a, that were required as part of the development of the lot as one entity. You recall, the original proposal was to build a hotel, office building, residential units, all as one project. For a variety of reasons, they've now created three lots. They have site review approval for one lot, and one of the conditions on that was to basically handle how the easements were going to be handled and to report back to you. This essentially is to report back to the board on the condition of tracking those easements. And you have a memo in your file from Attorney Sullivan with a suggested motion, which will clear the title, would clear any title research to show that the easements were taken care of, and this is consistent with both the subdivision and the site review approval for the board. And so we'd ask you to make that motion for the record so that we can move forward with the site plan and ultimately with the subdivision as well.
Is there a motion on that?
Do you like it read in full?
That would be best, because this is, this is actually for the, really for the registry to track this.
Chair, I move that in connection with the Portlock project, the planning board hereby approves the termination of the license for Deer Street access, shown on the declaration of license recorded in the Rockingham County Registry of Deeds at Book 4392, page 2890 at page 2892. This approval is subject to the prior recording of the private street agreement identified as item one on a letter addressed to Jeffrey Johnston of Parade Office LLC from David Holden, Holden Planning Director dated August 29, 2008, describing the conditions of final subdivision approval for property located at 195 Hanover Street.
Second. And we have a second. Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. The final item is amended, site plan review, and I'm going to turn the gavel over to Ms. Roberts, as I have a conflict with this application.
This damn thing's never gone off.
She gets the area, doesn't it?
Really? I don't think it's ever gone off.
Here's your number.
Yeah. That's what I want to know.
This is for amended site plan review. Request of Lafayette School Senior Apartments for property located at 100 Lafayette Road for amended site review approval to add an exterior generator and reduce the length of a wood fence.
Okay. The department entertained these amendments to the site plan. We're notifying you of them and recommending approval to the extent that they're going to amend the site review plan to add an exterior generator. That comes about as a result of the ice storm and the awareness that it would be appropriate to have a generator, which should also serve, by the way, as a neighborhood resource if we ever get into that issue again. We are, however, not supporting the change in materials on the fence, so it'll remain a wooden fence, and that's actually been withdrawn. But we've also recommended it be shortened slightly, because the butter that is most affected by it would prefer it that way, and we saw no issue with it. So we're notifying you of these changes, and unless anyone has a problem, we'll do them administratively.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions or discussion? Okay. Yeah, do we need a motion on that?
Nope.
We're all set. Okay, great, thank you.
Great job.
Beautiful. Hey, you know, it's all in the ring.
Move.
Yeah. Sitting there going, Lucy, your phone's going on.
Oh, my gosh. Augment. I'll let you do the focus on this, huh?
Yeah, you get all the fun ones.
Just before we call for adjournment, David, do you want to, I think there's a meeting next Wednesday?
Yes. Thank you very much. You may want to recall that the planning board is invited to a special meeting. There'll be convened with the EDC, the Historic District Commission, Artspeak, and the city council to review the Islington Street Corridor Study. That's at 7:00 in the Levinson Room of the Public Library. And as a result of our going out on the 25th, you do not have to come here on the 26th. So our next meeting here will be April 2nd for a special meeting to consider the senior housing overlay.
Regrettably, Mr. Chairman, I will be unable to make that meeting. I will be winging my way to Lincoln, Nebraska. Question, though, will this be recorded?
Yes.
Video, so we can get it on the, on the web?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Any other things before we call for adjournment? Just if you can keep your 1 International Drive packets?
Yes.
We'll use those for next month, so. But nothing else? Do I have a call for adjournment?
So moved.
Good night. Thank you.
Now I'm going.